Welcome, everybody, to the Larkspur City Council regular meeting on December fifteenth. Allison, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kendo.
I am here.
Councilmember Harrow.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Paulson.
Here.
Mayor Hillmer.
Here. Councilmember Way is. Please.
Oh, no, the councilmember Way is absent this evening.
All right, I will begin the meeting as we have for the past couple of years. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, the first item on this evening's agenda. After the roll call is public comment, are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments on items that are not on this evening's agenda? Allison, if you can help me.
From Joe Jennings.
Welcome, Joe.
Hi, it's Joe Jennings from the Commons Foundation. I just wanted to give you a brief update on our progress, but before I start, we wanted to thank councilmember Kevin Haroff and Catherine Way for their service on the working group with city manager Dan Schwartz and us. This was the most progress we've made in one year in the time I've been involved. And I think a lot of it was due to their leadership, so we wanted to thank them and publicly recognize them. We also want to let you know that our fundraising has accelerated and we have just crested $2.4 million in cash and pledges, much of it based on the results of your November seventeenth meeting, which was seen as dramatically positive to the public. In addition, we've initiated meetings with the Library Foundation, and we're seeking a meeting with the Community Foundation to bring the rest of the organized private one C threes together to help support the city and the new project. And lastly, we just wanted to let everyone know that we've now published all of our 990s on our website. So if people are interested in the financials behind the Commons Foundation, they're now publicly available. So to conclude, thank you, Kevin and Catherine, for great service and great progress in one year. Thank all of you for the progress you made as a council and for the city manager's role. And we look forward to a year from now crossing the finish line with you. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe. Thanks for all your work and thanks for the work of the Commons Foundation members. Allison, are there other public comments this evening?
Looking for any additional raised hands or emailed public comments. And there is no further public comment.
Thank you very much. The next item on this evening's agenda are presentations and proclamations. Before we get to the Bonner Bridge Replacement Project from our Public Works Director Julian Skinner. With the councils, without objection, we'd like to have a proclamation presented this evening to Planning Director Neil Toft. Would the city manager like to introduce this item? And with the city attorney's approval.
I think the city attorney feels that we can stray slightly from the Brown Act this evening. We have stealthfully put together a proclamation with the mayor that we are asking Neil to turn on his camera now. I think he may be going to do that. For folks that don't know, planning and building director Neil Toft, after more than 21 years with the city and many more years in public service is going to retire at the end of the calendar year. And so, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to turn it back to you to share a proclamation that I'm prepared about this subject.
Well, Neil, as a personal note, I have really appreciated the pleasure of working with you these past 20-plus years. And it's been a great gift to the city that you've been our planning director for this long time. You've helped us out quite a bit and helped us grow up quite a bit. So with this, I'd like to read this proclamation honoring your tenure upon your retirement. Whereas Director of Planning and Building Neil Toft has announced he will retire at the end of the calendar year after 21 and a half years of service to the city. He joined the city as Associate Planning, Associate Planning Number in 2001. And his hard work and dedication to his profession led to his promotion to Senior Planner in 2004. For the next eight years, he was a key member of the Larkspur Planning Team, particularly in the area of current planning. In 2012, we, the city council boldly asked Neil if he was ready to be considered for the Director of Planning position. A request that was rewarded on July 1st of that year. We'll never know if Neil would have wanted that position had he been told that three years later his role would be expanded to Director of Planning and Building. We're pleased to note that for posterity that Neil rose to the challenge. And under his direction, the Building Division activity and responsiveness have increased dramatically. Neil will leave behind a legacy that includes several projects, including the Community Facility Parcel, Master Plan, and the Rose Lane Development, which everyone notices as they drive through town now. And it's considered positive improvement. We've asked Neil to write this. Had we asked Neil to write this proclamation, it probably would be several pages long. And just one more thing would be a frequent used phrase. But just one more thing. Let it be known that his fellow staff members are sorry for all the playful teasing and jokes at Neil's expense that were perpetrated over the past many years, some with photographic evidence that we're going to hold on to. And just one more thing. Let it be known that the last clause is absolutely not true, and staff is not all that sorry. But it is true that staff appreciates that Neil was always good natured about being the subject of some gentle ribbing. And I can say this is true on behalf of myself as well. And I'm going to keep trying to get you to play golf with me, Neil. And on behalf of the city council, I, Mayor Dan Hillmer, do proclaim our deepest appreciation and gratitude to Neil Toft for his long and distinguished service to the Larkspur community and wish him well on the adventures and endeavors that await him in the next chapter of his life. And I'm particularly proud of the wording of this last paragraph. In witness thereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Larkspur to be affixed this day of December 2021 to this proclamation. Neil, would you like to make any comments?
Well, I will. I thank you very much, Mayor Hillmer and members of the city council, and I will be very brief. I appreciate very much the recognition that you're giving me. I know that you have a large meeting tonight, so I will keep this surprisingly brief and just say it has been an honor to serve the city of Larkspur, the citizens of Larkspur. It's a great community. I hold it dear to my heart. I've been a resident. I grew up in Marin and have been a resident of Marin County, and Larkspur is a very special place. I like to think myself and my staff have done the job of trying to keep, you know, maintain the character, the valuable historic character of this town and protect its environment. And you guys certainly will face some challenges in the future. And I will be ever supportive and grateful. And I'd also like to extend my gratitude to city manager Dan Schwartz, who offered me this appointment and had confidence in me to, you know, help steer the ship through these tumultuous waters. Appreciate that very much. It's been great serving with Dan and both the council, the commission, and many, the many other colleagues and employees I've worked with with Larkspur over these 20 years. My gratitude.
Are there other council members that would like to say nice things to our planning director this evening?
Mayor Hillmer, this is Councilmember Haroff, if I could possibly say something.
You have the floor.
And very briefly, following Neil's lead. First of all, I want to say that I regret that this commendation had not been prepared and be ready for delivery about two weeks earlier, in which case I would have been the one giving this proclamation tonight. But our mayor has done a good job, and I appreciate that. But more importantly, I want to express my personal thanks to Neil. Neil and I have worked together in all kinds of different respects over the last decade, both in the context in which I was serving as Planning Commissioner, but more recently, I suppose, on the city council. And in every aspect of that relationship, I have found Neil to be responsive, intelligent, thoughtful, and supportive of the needs of our community. That has been reflected as much as anything in the work that we've done together on the housing element and the general plan effort that we've been really working on since the last time I was mayor. And I really do appreciate very much and would like the opportunity over the next couple of days to express that appreciation even more fulsomely, but at least tonight. Thank you, Neil. You're a friend, you're a friend to me, you're a friend to the city. And we wish you all the best going forward.
All right. Gabe and I, I've only been on this for two years. I just, I just want to say you just seem like a super nice guy. I just wish you the best, and I know we've a you know, fantastic retirement or whatever you got planned next. Just hope it's great.
Well, just one more thing. Unless Gabe has, Gabe, you have any?
I just wanted to echo all the comments, you know, thank you so much. And, you know, I think, yeah, lucky to have spent some time with you. So, yeah, good luck in the future.
So, yeah, just, just one more thing is I we're, we're not planning to retire fully. I hope to continue to be engaged in the future with the greater community of Marin and helping work on whether professionally or as a citizen or advocate of many of the causes to help promote sustainability and, and housing goals and things like that to then continue to keep Marin as a, as a wonderful county it is. I won't be entirely going away, so I look forward to continuing to work with you and the community on occasion on broader topics. So thank you very much.
And with Zoom, you can't escape us.
All right, thank you very much. Dan Schwartz, any any frosting on the cake here for Neil before we move past this item?
You know, Neil took the directorship role. I wasn't, hadn't been here that long and we've gone through a lot of weird battles together. We've seen the community rally and help us deal with a lot of tough topics and I've enjoyed every minute of it. And I really appreciate Scott noting that Neil's just a really nice guy because the staff will tell you, you know, once in a while I'll get a little annoyed with folks and Neil seemed to get a little worked up with him, but I don't think there's any person I've ever worked with that's harder to stay mad at than Neil Toft because you are just a genuinely good person, Neil. So we're going to miss you terribly.
Yeah.
Well, I'll follow up on that. I remember we had observed Neil when he was working for the city of Sausalito. And we quickly recruited him for our planning staff, knowing that one day he would be our planning director. And it was a very proud day when I was able to be part of the council attracting Neil to help work with us. He's never let us down. He's always been there keeping an even keel to the ship moving forward as he described. And it's often doesn't, goes without much comment, but he kept things from boiling over all these years. And we're all really grateful, and that's the sign of a good leader. So I'm sure he's going to take that experience and move on, and I'm sure he's not really retiring, but he's going to be around to help us and others out for the duration. So we're really grateful, Neil. Look forward to next steps. Thank you for all your work for the city and look forward, look forward to you staying in the county and staying relevant. So we'll move, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda this evening, which we have a presentation on the Bonner Bridge, a status report. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, good evening, Public Works Director Julian Skinner. Have a PowerPoint presentation here, an update on the Bonner Bridge Replacement Project. We've been coming to these council meetings about every six months or so with these updates and we're getting close to the end. I think this is probably our second to last update. The end is in sight. So just to recap, this project started back in 2018 with the award of a contract, a Golden State Bridge. Awarded as a 1,491 working days, just over four years project for various reasons related to the environmental constraints and the desire to keep the bridge open during construction. Contract was for $26.7 million. This is the main tracking that we've been doing throughout the project. This, the same table we've been presenting at each update is where we are with the working days and where we are with the construction dollars. So you can see in the last column here, tracks are percentage complete. So we're 86% through as far as the time wise goes on this project. A little under, a little over 200 days, working days left. And we've spent 24 out of the $26.7 million so far. So we've spent completed about 90% of the work, and we've gone through about 86% of the workdays. Still tracking the change orders, roughly $800,000 in change orders to date, which is about 3% of the bid amount. These were the major components that we broke down for the work on the left-hand column, starting with demolishing the old bridge all the way through building the two halves of the bridge. And as you can see, as we work our way down to the bottom, we're in the final stages now, which is the south side of the bridge deck has been constructed. And we're working on the closure pour, which is joining the south and the north half of the bridge together as well as the finish work, which is the railings and some of the bridge approaches on some of the signal work, the intersections on either side of the bridge. Looking forward to project completion in spring, summer of '22. So the last update, we were before you in May of this year, and at that point, we had finished the substructure of the south side of the bridge. So in the photo here, we're looking from the Magnolia end of the bridge. The completed north half of the bridge is on the left, and then kind of in the middle of the photo is the, the cast-in drill hole piles in the creek and the bent caps, and then the temporary trestle that the crane is sitting on. That's where we were at our last update. And here's roughly where we are today. So now you see the completed bridge deck, both the north half and the south half of the bridge deck have been completed and the temporary trestle is gone. It's been removed from the creek. So the work that was completed between our last update in May and now how we got to this stage is we brought the girders in. That was in July of this year. They were brought in and the bridges closed for a week while we placed those girders on the bent caps in the creek. This is a close-up photo here of putting the girders on the bridge, and here's the aerial that shows when we had completed putting the girders on. So again, the existing, the completed north half of the bridge is at the left half of the photo, and then the kind of the three lines there are the three lines of the girders on the south half. And then at this point, the temporary trestle was still in the creek. And once the girders were in, we started prepping for pouring the bridge deck. So you see the plywood here that spans in between the bridge girders. And you start to see the purple reinforcing steel sticking up from the girders and also being placed on the bridge deck here and preparation for the bridge deck. And then the deck was poured in late October of this year. Here's a photo of that operation, similar to what we did on the north side of the bridge. And again, an aerial view here, this is the midpoint of the deck pore. So again, looking from the Magnolia end of the bridge, looking east, you can kind of see towards South Aliso there where the crane is, the deck has been poured. And the equipment is about a third of the way across the bridge, making its way west. And then you can see all the purple rebar in the section of the bridge deck that hasn't been poured at the point of this photo. And then once the bridge deck was poured, we moved on to installing the railings on the south side of the bridge. So the railing you see here is what will separate the vehicular traffic from the pedestrian sidewalk. It's a similar arrangement to what we installed on the Doherty Drive Bridge. So there'll be a railing between the sidewalk and the cars on the travel lanes of the bridge. And then 10-foot wide sidewalks on each side of the bridge. So this was placing the concrete for the south sidewalk next to that railing, and then there will be another railing on the outboard side of this 10-foot sidewalk. This is our constraints calendar that we've been looking at all along. And as you can see here, the arrow is pointing to where we are in the constraints. So fortunately, we're out of the water, so the steelhead is not a concern for us anymore, and we're finished pile driving, so the Ridgeway rail is not a concern anymore either. So even though we're in the constraint period for those two species, the work that's left doesn't impact them. So we'll be moving forward with the approaches and the railings and the sidewalks on the bridge, those. The steelhead and the rail were mainly impacts for work that was being done in the water. And now that the trestle has been removed from the water, we're completely out of the water and we don't have those constraints anymore. You may have noticed, driving over the bridge, that there's some funny-looking equipment near where the pump station is. So we did have an issue with the pump station that was installed. It turns out that we had some rodent visitors that chewed through the control wires for the pumps. And so as we had our 15 inches of rain a month or so ago, the pump station didn't turn on. And so upon further investigation, we found that there were these issues with these control wires. And unfortunately, the through the pumps trying to turn themselves on, it damaged the pumps too. So that's why you see in the photo at the bottom, there's temporary pumps out on Bonner Road right now. So that's how we're handling the drainage that should be being handled by that pump station. So a fix is in the works, but unfortunately, we'll have this temporary equipment out there until we can get the pump station back online. Some of the next work you'll see is new traffic signals at South Aliso. They've been in red flash for some time now, which essentially is an always stop. We have the last of the new signal poles to go up, and then everything will be tested, and then we'll put that signal into full operation at South Aliso. And then, once we have the south side sidewalk finished, we will probably late January to February-ish, we'll be flipping traffic over to the new north side of the bridge, sorry, to the new south side of the bridge so that we can then work on the sidewalk on the north side of the bridge. So the yellow area here indicates where we'll be working next to construct the north sidewalk, but we have to move traffic over to the south side before we can do that. So probably around the end of January, we'll be putting out a construction notice to let folks know when we get closer to that. Both the traffic and the pedestrians will be moved over to the south side of the bridge at that time. And then we'll be doing other finished items such as the railings on the bridge. This is the outboard railing on the north side that has been installed. And as you saw in a previous photo, the railing between the cars and the sidewalk on the south side has been installed, but we have the rest of the railings to be installed too when we finish with the sidewalk. And then we also have work to do on Bonner Road. We've only built half of it to date, so we still have the south portion of Bonner Road to repave and redo the curbs and get that approach all lined up with the new bridge. So that's the update for the Bonner Bridge, but I do have some bonus coverage for you tonight. This is not the only bridge being built in Larkspur. Earlier this week, I was out on the North-South Greenway Project. So this is the Tams, part of Tams North-South Greenway Project. The map here shows the northern segment that's been split into two components, and one of them is the bridge. 12-foot wide pedestrian and bike bridge that's being attached to the northbound 101 off-ramp to Sir Francis Drake. So that's the portion that's highlighted or circled in yellow here. Then the next part of the orange will be a city project that will follow to continue that path down to the pedestrian over crossing and industrial on Redwood. And so the photo here shows what the current condition is for the bike and heads using this area. It's about a four-foot wide concrete path with railings on both sides. Problematic for people crossing, passing each other, especially if one of them is on a bike. And so this project will be adding a 12-foot wide new path on the outside. And so here's some photos on the left. This is standing near the south end, looking south. Again, you see the same kind of construction that we had on the Bonner Bridge. You see a lot of the purple epoxy-coated rebar getting ready for a deck pore there. And then on the right, this is a photo with the north end looking. You can see the central Marin ferry connector in the background there. And then a couple of more photos. So they're still completing all of the steel on the deck. All the girders have been placed. Probably a couple of months of concrete work to do on this project, and then they'll move into their railings too. And they're probably looking at a May completion date similar to the Bonner Bridge. And here's kind of a photo from the midspan. Kind of hard to tell on this photo, but you can see there's kind of a curved component that's in plywood here. That's one of the belvedeers that are being added to the bridge, and that's a part of the pathway where it'll be wider so that people can pull out and admire the view looking down the creek. So that's it for my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Julian. An amazingly complex set of projects. And I think we should not take them for granted, the complexity and the ease of which the staff and public works crew is keeping things, traffic flowing and problems minimized as we move through this. Very challenging. Are there questions from council members for Julian or comments on the presentation before we ask the public? Council members?
Mr. Mayor, I had my hand up, but I'd see Vice Mayor Paulson also jumped in, so I'll let him go first.
Thank you, Kevin. Just briefly, Julian, the damage to the pump, can you say a little bit more about that? Is that something that's going to require major repair, or is that, you know, something that'll not really affect the budget?
It's unclear at this time because the pumps are still being Um, it's unclear at this time because the pumps are still being repaired. So we don't know what the final cost is. You know, there's obviously a cost to the the wires that'll have to be replaced and received. But we don't, we don't have all the accounting yet of. Of the damage to the complete system. And there's also a question of responsibility as far as how much of that is city responsibility and how much of it is contractor responsibility. So. We'll, we'll be tracking that moving forward and it'll be part of the final budget analysis. Based on where we are with our. Extra work contingencies to date. It's not anything that's going to break the budget, but obviously we'd like to minimize costs as best as we can moving forward.
Thank you very much.
It looks like our mayor maybe frozen a bit.
I think while he's. Rebooting or coming back on vice, Mr. Vice Mayor, we might need you to. Step in. I do know councilor Hoss had wanted.
Yeah, sure. Yes, please, Councilor.
Yes, just very briefly, and I I had questions about the rat problem as well, but I think. That will be addressed in due course. The. The two things I wanted to say is. Thank you, Julian. You have been. Terrific leader. And overseer to this project for as long as I can remember, certainly as long as I've been involved with this project. And it looks great. It looks like it looks like something that would be built on our federal interstate highway system. It's a terrific project. It is coming to fruition. I think we've been all waiting for that point to come and it's now in sight. And I want to thank you personally for your leadership and for all the hard work of your staff. In making that happen and I. Am anxious to be there at the opening ceremony sometime this this year. And then finally, also very happy and glad that you mentioned the North South Greenway project. A lot of folks have commented on that and kind of wondered what's going on there. We all know what's going on there. Glad to see that making progress and actually happy to hear that it will be concluded around the same time as the Bon Air Bridge project is is. Is worked through. And just on that, on that note, I want to thank our mayor. Dan Helmer for his leadership with TAM. And preserving the interests of our local community. In that project, moving the North South Greenway forward. And also representing the interest of floor expert on transportation issues. That affect our larger community in Marin County. So this is a night of congratulations all the way around and. Can't wait for that, that opening ceremony on the Bon Air Bridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harof. Any other council members, any questions for Director Skinner? Seeing none, we can go to the public. Is anybody in the public have any questions or comments for Director Skinner?
Looking for any raised hands from our audience members or email public comment. Uh, this question or this comment, I'm sorry, comes in from Arlene. Can Julian please comment on backup power for the Bon Air Bridge pump station? We had requested a long time ago to address this in case the power goes out during a storm. Also, what is the plan during storm events to monitor that these pumps are actually working? Thank you. That was our only email comment and I'm looking for any raised hands. And there's no additional public comment.
Thank you, Allison. Julian, do you want me to take that?
Yes, so this pump station, like our other major pump stations in the city. Is equipped with a hookup for a generator so that in an event that there's a power loss. We can connect a generator to it. And as far as monitoring during storm events. This pump station has telemetry built in. So at the moment, the pump station is under the control of the contractor. So the contractor is. Monitoring the pump station and operating it. Which is typical of a construction project. Once the project is accepted by the city, then the city will take it over. And all of the pumps and all of the mechanical equipment there all has telemetry. So. Our maintenance personnel will get notifications pushed to their phone that will let them know when there are. Certain alarms in the pump station, whether it's a high water level alarm that somebody needs to go and look at and. Figure out why a pump isn't working or something similar to that.
Thank you, Julian. And I also want to echo the the comments that came before, especially council member. Hereoff just that, you know, appreciation for. What I think of the on time, on scope, on budget triangle, you know, seeing you navigate that with. All the other things going on, it really is is really inspiring and we're all grateful. So thank you for that presentation. And if we don't have any other questions, I think we can move on to the next item, which is the consent agenda. Okay, so does any?
So let the council know, Mayor Helmer lost his internet at home. He's working on getting on with his phone. And should be joining us, but said proceed and he'll be on as soon as he can.
Okay, thank you. So for the consent calendar, does any member from the council want to pull an item for discussion or consideration? Okay, seeing none. Does any member of the public want to pull an item from the consent agenda for discussion or consideration?
Looking for any raised hands from our audience members or any emailed public comments. And there's no public comment.
Thank you. Does, can we get a motion to move the agenda, the consent calendar?
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Candell. Second. It looks like Kevin, you're muted.
Sorry, that's for some reason I got muted. I'd like to second the motion.
Thank you. Can we get a roll call, Allison?
Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
Councilmember Harof?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paulson?
Yes. And the motion passes. Thank you. Okay, so moving to the next item on the agenda. If we could have a report from the city manager.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll be very brief. Just two things to note for the council and the public. First is that the city offices will be closed. Beginning on the 24th. And that closure will go through to January 3rd. We'll reopen on January 3rd. The library will actually be closing on the 23rd to the public and will reopen on the 3rd. The library is going to be doing some deep cleaning. We're also working on some new technology for the library that will be getting up and running during that period. One of those new technologies is something I told you about early in COVID that we were so excited to order and then. It turned out libraries all over the country were super excited to order them and they got on backorder. Which is we finally got our locker, your Amazon. Locker style system. So if you go back behind City Hall, you're going to see that they have this big blue box and that's what it is. And so we're going to get that up and running. During the winter closure so that in January, we hope to. To bring that online for folks. And then the other thing I wanted to note along those same lines is the council will not hold a meeting on the first Wednesday of January. So there will not be a meeting on January 5th. The council's first meeting in 2022 will be on January 19. And with that, I turn it back to you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions for our city manager? Great. Thanks again. Okay, so I guess we can move now to the next item, which is council member or reports and comments. Does anybody have anything they want to share with us? Councilmember Candell, please.
Thank you. And I just wanted to bring something to the council's attention and public's attention. I am the representative for the project Home Key on Aliso. This is getting a little contentious in the sense that there's now a petition with over 1,500 people. Who are against this. I realize that this is a county project and. You know, we could take a hands off approach. However, as representatives of the people living in Larkspur. It may be our responsibility. To discuss this and take position. If this is something we want to support, if this is something we want to get involved in as a city or something we just want to. Like I said, put our hands up and not be involved. I I'm just mentioning this because I think. We should probably bring it up and put it on a future agenda to figure out how we want to handle this. Because it is kind of snowballing at this point and I I don't think it would be wise to just ignore it. And that's, that's my comment.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Candell on that report? I I did have a question for you. I I've also spent some. This past weekend on Sunday, I drove to the site. And then I I engaged with a large number of constituents. They've been emailing us and. I'm wondering, you know, if there is any way that you and and council member Way can. Act as liaisons and possibly get some of the procedures clarified from ECS. So there are our county contractor. And you know, whether the direction is coming from them or from the county to see what some of the behavioral policies are. You know, for for the coming residents onsite, offsite, you know, different, different steps. If any of that is published. That might be very valuable to to bring back. I'm very engaged now and supportive of what you're doing. And. I think what I'm seeing is a real lack of clarity. So I guess my question to you is, is that something that you might be able to get? Or do you have any information on that?
Yeah, so so we're in the process of doing that. I think I think the challenge and I I'm speaking just as an individual right now. The challenge is that. ECS. Doesn't have the answers or maybe just doesn't have the answers that the community likes. And at this point, it feels like both sides have been unwilling to compromise in a sense of. You know, maybe. Maybe there are some residents that might not be appropriate to be housed on a safe routes to school. Is there some way we could have some filtering process? If there are people who are not appropriate to exclude that subsegment of this group. So that it is a good fit for the neighborhood. And that's where I'm trying to. To lead these conversations of both sides and say, okay, what are the the serious issues and how are we going to deal with those serious issues? But it's just taking some time. So that's, that's where we are. I I think it may be a a lack of information, but I think it's also just a lack of of meeting in the middle, which, you know, maybe over time we'll get there.
Great, thank you for that. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Councilmember Harof, did you want to say anything or any reports?
Uh, no. No reports.
Great, I'll go briefly. I. Also wanted to kind of just send out a message of thanks. You know, it's the right time of year, but. I have to say, especially in the last day since our last council meeting, I've had the. Incredible privilege of meeting a lot of staff and a lot of community members. So. I just to name a few, our chief of police, our. Our fire chief, who I think is on this Zoom meeting, Ruben Chief Martin. And you know, it's quite a few other members and in the community, the Larkspur Community Foundation, I I got to meet with all of them and. Recently with the aging group, we just on the consent calendar, you know, passed our age friendly application for the ARP. And I'm, I'm just filled with a lot of gratitude and a lot of inspiration for the intelligence, the engagement. And and the enthusiasm of so many community members, which make, you know, our job, or at least my job as a volunteer, truly a pleasure. And and I also want to get a special call out to our city manager, Dan Schwartz. I had breakfast, had a lunch with him recently and. I each, you know, jokingly say we've met about 50 times and I think of it as 50 therapy sessions, but just that his. Patience and his wise counsel and and his availability is truly, truly appreciated. So I just. Want to say many, many thanks to to the city manager for that. And of course, to all the others, Neil, for the times you've you've made yourself available and you're leaving and so forth. So. My basic report is, is thank you, thank you. Okay, and with that, if there are no other comments or any anything else, I think we can move to our next agenda item. Which is the public hearing. So item 7.1 is to introduce and waive the first reading. Of the ordinance amending the refuse collection. So I believe we have a a report for that.
Yes, a couple of things. The first one to note, council member Hillmer, sorry, Mayor Helmer is. Listening on his phone. And will participate as technology allows them to. So he is here. But I think he may need your assistance, Vice Mayor Paulson, to steer the meeting. And with that, we are going to open a public hearing to do the first reading of the ordinance amending. The refuse collection and recycling chapter and hear from our consultant R3 as Rose Radford to give you a presentation about. What this ordinance is about and. Answer any questions you have. So Rose, I'm going to turn it over to you.
All right, good evening. Vice Mayor and council members and mayor by by phone. It's my pleasure to be with you tonight. So. I'm Rose Radford with R3 Consulting. I think you heard from my colleague a few weeks ago on the rate hearing. So. I'm here today to give you a little more information about Senate Bill 1383. And the two actions before you tonight, which is the approving an ordinance and also an amendment to the franchise agreement with Marin Sanitary Service. So with that, here's my presentation and I'll just move forward quickly. As I mentioned, I'll be providing a little bit of background about Senate Bill 1383, which underpins both of the the actions before you tonight. I will summarize what's contained in the municipal code update. And City Hall or responsibilities under that. And those City Hall or responsibilities are then codified in the amendment. And then describe a little bit more about the the timeline and schedule involved here. So um, the main focus of Senate Bill 1383 is on organics. So the first question is, what are organics? Well, it's essentially what you put in your green card at home. So yard trimmings, vegetative matter, also Marin Sanitary Service, your your garbage hauler accepts food scraps in that container. And food soil paper and things of that nature. Why is organic waste important? Well, it's actually two thirds of our waste stream. So two thirds of the material that goes to landfill right now is considered organics. That includes also lumber and and wood and paper. And also that sometimes is is edible food that could be instead used to feed people in need. So people. California is throwing away usable. Food so that the law is both attempting to focus on reducing the amount of landfilled organics and reducing food insecurity. Why is landfill organics important? Well, if organics are landfill, they produce methane, which is, as you know, is a potent greenhouse gas. So that contributes to the effects of climate change. SB 1383 could primarily be considered actually a. A climate change initiative and and that's really the. How I presented to you and when you consider the impacts of this ordinance before you tonight. So the bill is an unfunded state mandate, which imposes not only requirements on your residents and businesses. But also on you as as a city entity as well. It's at statewide targets in bills on prior laws. I'll get into a little bit more detail about the rest of those in a moment. First, I'll. Touch on the. Responsibilities of the of the city yourselves. So the primary responsibility is to provide organics collection to everyone. So. Responsibilities of the of the city yourselves. So the primary responsibility is to provide organics collection to everyone. So. As you know, residents already have the three container sort system within which you're sorting um. Recycling into two separate sides, but it it's fundamentally three containers. Um, the law would then. Expand that three container sort system to everyone within the city. So that's also, uh, you know, any multifamily that doesn't. Currently have access to the three containers and uh all businesses uh that are not exempt. Um, and it's important also to note that your current uh collection system is fully compliant. So Marin Sanitary Service. Does provide and offer organics collection service to all businesses currently. Uh, the city is is um responsible for establishing an edible food recovery program. Conducting education and outreach is which is really an important uh aspect of making sure that. Um, people who are are may not be aware of the ability to sort out, for example, food scraps. Um, get on board with that. Uh, there are some requirements for procurement, uh, that's recyclable. And paper and some organic uh recovered organic products, uh, secure access to edible food. Uh, collection, which is really uh probably through your food bank and other similar organizations and ultimately to monitor. And uh, conduct enforcement. Uh, again, this uh echoes other similar laws, most recently AB eighteen twenty-six, which also required certain businesses to sign up for organic service. So what does this mean? I I'm going to start with your residents. Um, all residents already have access again to the service. So substantially, there are no real changes to residents. Um, there are some changes for uh businesses and multifamily. So uh, if you're a business or multifamily. To comply, fundamentally, you need to sign up for organic service. Or you could backhaul or self haul organics um in compliance with the the applicable requirements of the ordinance. Or if you generate a very low amount of organic waste, you could be eligible for a waiver. So you could apply for a waiver. Um, and through that mechanism, you could also be compliant. For edible food recovery, um, there's certain businesses, uh. Soon it will be supermarkets and large grocery stores that are required to um. To recover the maximum amount of edible food that they can and donate that. Um, maintain a contract or written agreement and records. Um, and the city intends to coordinate with regional stakeholders um for to establish this program. There's also an inspections and enforcement aspect. So compliance monitoring to confirm that businesses are signed. Up for service or or otherwise, um, may have a waiver. Uh, there are is a. Monitoring aspect of the law which involves lid flips. That means that somebody may be actually looking in the garbage containers to confirm. That there's no contamination that's occurring. Um, and also, beginning in twenty twenty-four, the state um is requiring jurisdictions to begin to enforce through notices. A violation and potentially fines. I'm going to touch a little bit briefly on procurement again. Uh, there are uh targets that are set by the state based on your population. And again, this is a program that's being developed as we speak. So now I'll speak briefly on the municipal code update again. Um, most of the requirements of the law really are primarily on the the residents, businesses um within your city limits. Um, why are we suggesting you update your municipal code? Well, SB thirteen eighty-three requires the enforceable mechanism. So each city throughout the entire state. This month is really looking at an ordinance just like the one before you tonight and is required by the state to uh to pass a similar ordinance. So the changes to the municipal code include the adopting that mandatory uh service requirement. Uh, describe the waivers, describe uh the regulation around uh self haul of material if that does occur. Contamination noticing uh the edible food recovery requirements on certain businesses. Um, and also there are potentially penalties here. So I wanted to highlight this because, you know, this is where we see where. Uh, some entities may not be able to comply, at least not immediately. So if. Businesses are not separating out their organics or their their recycling properly. Um, that that could be a grounds for penalty, not subscribe, not subscribe to enough service. So they have a lot more recycling than they can put. In the recycling container. So it ends up in the garbage. Um, and other educational material as well as, of course, if you're not donating edible food, which is required. There um is regulation on the haulers, um specifically the self haul sector. Uh, and if certain entities do not report, um, there's also a requirement for if members of the public are aware of. Noncompliance, they they can submit a complaint and then uh the city would then investigate that complaint. Um, so that feels like a lot. There's there is a lot built into this law and there's a lot that. You know, is built into the municipal code update. The good news is that, as I mentioned, your current collection system in Marin Sanitary Service. Um, uh, is already substantially compliant and already really completing almost all of these activities on your behalf already. Um, so what we are describing here is is um sort of a clarification. Uh, what what is before you today? The third amendment to the franchise agreement uh just clearly describes each of the hall or responsibilities. And again, that is the majority of compliance and um implementation of the law would be room and sanitary service, which is. Then, um, you know, proven themselves to be a very valuable partner to the city. Uh, so as proposed, Marin Sanitary Service would do the compliance review, do all of the um. Compliance for in terms of container labeling, uh outreach and education. Do the route reviews, which is the lid flips I mentioned, evaluate and provide a recommendation to the city about uh waiver eligibility. And also assist with state reporting. Uh, the city would remain responsible substantially for record keeping and reporting. Um, that would be through the local joint powers authority. Um, doing some coordination on outreach and education, the procurement requirements and of course. Um, issuance of notices of violation which cannot be uh delegated to a private entity. So uh, just briefly on the timeline. So tonight uh before you is the first reading of the ordinance. Um, it's tentatively scheduled for the second reading, January nineteenth. Um, the Marin Sanitary Service Amendment is also before you tonight. Uh, the regulations do take effect January first. Uh, the first implementation report to the state is um due on April first. And then again, enforcement would begin um January first, twenty twenty-four. Uh, and at that point, tier two edible food generators, um which are smaller. Uh, edible food generators would be required to comply. So I know I may have gone through this very quickly, so I'm very happy to take any questions. Um, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Rose. That was excellent. Um, looks like uh council member Candell had a question.
Actually, I have a lot of questions. Um, I am trying to understand and and they're kind of a little more big picture questions. So. Um, what is being proposed as a change to the local municipal code? How much of that is mandated by state law and how much of it is? Uh, are are we going above and beyond uh in what we're being asked to do?
That's an excellent question. I'd be happy to take that. So, um, the ordinance that's before you tonight is the the. Is essentially what's required by state law. So there's, there's not no aspects of that that which would be considered voluntary.
So.
Above and beyond.
It's so so, for example, the uh the penalties. You know, that uh you're discussing, that is something mandated by state law that we go out and we. Find our constituents if they don't. I I mean, it might my concern is I I'm concerned about the whole uh getting one citizen to rat on the other citizen that they're not. Recycling enough or their food is not, you know, they're not putting enough food here or there and and all of a sudden people are turning on each other and. And I I'm not sure I want to encourage that. So my my question is, is that a state? Law requirement or is that something that 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 we're just coming up with?
It 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 is a state law requirement. We are, the state has actually included um in the mandates to all the cities that they. Take the enforcement procedures and we have not, including having provided. Um, a model ordinance for cities, um, that this is largely following. Um, but we're basic, but we're not doing anything more than what the state requires. I do want to clarify though that. Um, while we have to satisfy the state obligation to do the enforcement that they're telling us to do. Um, the city, I I believe, and I see the city manager has come on and will likely confirm this is the city's intentions in terms of enforcement is to. Is to enforce this in the same manner that it would any other provision of the municipal code in terms of. Um, give working with residents to come into compliance prior to issuing any fines. The main point of state law. Um, including the penalty provisions is to um get people to comply, not to issue penalties or fines. And so the city would work with. Residents when there's a noted violation to educate, bring them into compliance and only as a last resort. Um, um, contemplate the fines that are authorized under the ordinance.
And and then let me just follow up. Let's say we as a council say, you know what? We don't want to do this. Screw this. We're voting no, we're not doing it. What what is the, I'm sure there's kind of a estate stick. Yeah, it says, if you don't do this, we're gonna blah, blah, blah. What's that?
Cow recycle, which is the state agency that is uh authorized to oversee this, will be reviewing every city's municipal code to determine whether or not they have adopted a compliant ordinance. And if they find that um a city is not in compliance, they will themselves um issue fines.
So my my uh next is I am, I'm assuming that as our city attorney, you are recommending that we pass this as we are just. Uh, don't really have a whole lot of choice. The state is mandated that we have to pass this and and therefore we're just kind of. Stamping what's already been done. Is that an accurate assessment?
It is. I I guess the one thing I would add to that, though, is um. The city um effectively already has a requirement to subscribe to these services. Um, and so somebody who was failing to um. Uh, comply with um. The the existing municipal code requirements that that are themselves based on state regulatory mandates for diversions of waste. So si- the city is already on, let me state this differently. The city is already under significant mandates from the state to um get residents to divert waste from the landfill. If the city found out that residents were were not participating in the existing services. Um, and as a result, not meeting those regulatory um requirements, the city would already be talking with them about coming into compliance. Um, so. Things are are more stringent, um, but but there's already a fairly substantial state regulatory framework that the city is complying with. To minimize the amount of waste that goes to landfills and descend to other locations. So. I am recommending that the council do this, but I also want to reflect that while the ordinance itself is substantial. It's not a significant change in the sense of um deviating from the existing uh. Uh, the status quo of of people having to um participate in these programs.
All right, and just my last follow up question to our city manager. Do you also uh recommend that we as a council pass this? Or is there any reason? Uh, you would think maybe we should think twice about this?
Uh, I'm going to recommend that you pass it. Uh, I I. It's not a secret, so I'll say it out of the record. This is not my favorite government agency. Um, and and I also want to put on the record that um Marin is not the target of this legislation. You know, Marin is not the part of the state having trouble doing these things, but we need to comply too. And we can always do better. And so passing these ordinances is our signal that we're going to keep doing the best we can and. You know, we're we're well above the curve uh statewide on all of these programs.
I think, and thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you, council member. Uh, any other questions from the council? Great. Well, be before we move on, I wanted to ask, oh, there we go. Oh, that was that was my question if uh the mayor would be returning. So. I yield to you, uh, Mayor Helmer.
Maybe not yet.
Maybe not yet. While he's getting set up, um, I guess we go to the public and see if there's any public comments on. On this agenda item seven point one. So Allison, can you see if there looks like there's three hands, uh, two raised hands?
Allison, I think it might be appropriate to to call on uh Marin Sanitary first since they are a hauler.
Okay, I apologize to the car. I just unmuted. I'm going to briefly remove your permission. Our first comment here will come from Marin Sanitary Service, Patty Garberino.
Thank you.
I'm sorry to disappoint, but this is Justin Wilcock uh on behalf of Patty Garberino. Um, we're we're juggling two council meetings tonight, so she's um participating with the Fairfax meeting. Uh, I'm here with with Joe Garberino and um, uh, thank you, um, Vice Mayor and and Council for the opportunity to speak. Um, and the opportunity to work with you on this as as has been described. Uh, we feel that we are in a good position for uh meeting the requirements of SB thirteen eighty-three and and working with you as a partner in this. Um, we are, have worked with uh Rose and R three on the amendment and are. Uh, in agreement with the the points and and changes to that um to the amendment to our franchise agreement. Uh, as to the requirements of of us uh in helping you to uh implement the thirteen eighty-three regulation. Uh, we do have um one or a few things that we wanted to um. Put on the record or or request of the council regarding the ordinance uh that's in that's uh being heard. Um, one of the the concerns that that we've expressed is. Um, and and it was asked about, you know, what what is is mandatory that you adopt of the ordinance? The cow recycle. Provided a model language, but that model language, uh, you know, you don't have to adopt all of that model language and. And one of the concerns that we've expressed is um around the provision of self hauling. That it um could potentially uh open the door to um. To businesses, residents feeling that they can take their green waste that they're collecting and. And deposit it anywhere in in the community. Uh, and we've actually seen that in in Santa fell recently. Um, there. There was a uh a landscaper doing his own work that was dumping the the ground material on the school grounds. Uh, unauthorized by the school. So in order to um help prevent that, we would recommend um three changes to the. Amendment and I did email those um to uh city manager Dan Schwartz. So um. Dan, I'm not sure if you have that, but I can read the language that we would suggest.
I think the city attorney actually has some, has those ready to call up. So if we could put them on the screen while you read them, Justin, it'd be helpful. Okay. Right, Sky? Am I remembering correctly?
That is correct. I can do that. I can share my screen right now.
Great, thank you. And I'm sorry, Justin and I played phone tag today, so we didn't get a chance to coordinate a heads meeting, council members.
Yeah, thank you. So, um. The, so the self haul definition, um, again, we we would recommend. Uh, the definition saying means a person who hauls solid waste, organic waste or recovered material. They have generated to a solid waste facility or a shipping slash grinding operation authorized pursuant to fourteen CCR. Uh, one, seven, eight, six, two point one A that processes or recovers source separated organic materials. Again, just um helping define that you can't just uh dump material anywhere. And then the self hauler requirements, um, similar self hauler shall haul their source separated recyclable materials to a permitted facility. That recovers those materials, haul their source separated organic materials to a solid waste facility. That processes or recovers source separated organic materials and haul any other solid waste to an authorized disposal site. And then there was also a recommendation on the authorized collector. I'm not sure if you have that. As well.
I do. Just give me one second.
Yep. Perfect. And then on in the authorized collector definition. Authorized collector means such persons, firms or corporations providing collection services. Under an agreement between the city and such person. Firm or corporation collecting and diverting solid waste for disposal, recycling or processing. Originating in the city under an exclusive franchise agreement with the city. And we feel that these changes would. Work in the best interest of the city and would align with our franchise agreement currently in place. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison, do we have any anybody else?
The next public comment will come from James Holm.
James Holmes, Larkspur. My question and comment is, why should the? Own, why should only commercial customers have a waiver process available to them? Why isn't that option also available to residential customers equally? Both sets of customers are similarly situated in that they are defined as generators and. Required to be subscribers and follow rigid rules regarding permissible receptacles. It seems unfair and potentially a violation of constitutional equal protection or due process. To give to only one of those similarly situated classes of customers, the commercial customers. Access to a waiver option to consider their individual circumstances, but to deny. That same option to residential customers. I believe the that both classes of customers should be treated equally with regard to the availability of a waiver process.
Thank you, James. Any other comments?
Looking for any additional raised hands or email to public comment. And there is no further public comment.
Thanks, Allison.
Rose, perhaps you could first address Mr. Holmes's comment about residential and commercial. And then I think. The bigger conversation is about the submissions for insanity. So we'll do that second.
I'm happy to do so. So the majority of waivers that we would expect under the law is for minimal. Generation of organic waste as residents is would generally. Produce organic waste. And because of just the sheer volume of residential customers and the fact that three container. Services by default provided to all residents. The. Law really does only contemplate waivers for the commercial sector. So in other words, I would expect most residents not to qualify under the waiver. Guidelines that are again put forward by the state and required by the state for you to use.
And am I correct? Because service is bundled for residential customers, a waiver would be a request to not have to have a can that you'd be paying for anyway.
That's correct.
Thank you. And then I think the city manager, you you're inviting a broader discussion after that point.
Well, I think. It might be appropriate for us to talk a little bit about the submissions from Marin Sanitary. That I I do see Councilor Candell has his hand up, so it's on the previous point. We can address that first.
No, it's on that same point. So so I I thought it would be appropriate to to hear from our city attorney. About the changes that were redlined and the effect of those changes.
Would it be helpful for me to, as part of that, to bring the the slides back up for the council to see the text? Okay. All right. Okay, so the first proposed change had to do with the definition of an authorized collector. And having reviewed these proposed changes, I don't. Have a strong objection to them. I think that they're less well integrated into the rest of the ordinance than the the. Version that's in the ordinance that was in your packet. But ultimately I can live with this because it's it's consistent in substance. I just, again, I just don't think that it's as well integrated. Or as clear as as what's in the version in your packet. But but I don't think it does any harm to the city or to the enforceability of the ordinance. Regarding the the regulate, the definition of self haul and the regulations for self haulers. What's in your packet? Is actually follows the California Code of Regulations as well as the model ordinance. It's also consistent with the existing municipal code and the franchise agreement, existing franchise agreement. Basically says that that the provision of service is to be consistent with the municipal code. So I what I'd add is that. The issue of self hauling is one that my understanding is cow recycle is continuing to review itself. And and is likely to be updating its own regulations about the around the subject. And so I, my personal view is that for the moment, the better approach is to. Use what's, use the version that's in your packet, since that does follow the current regulations. And to revisit the issue after and if and when. Cow recycle does update regulations or and to address the issue of potentially illegal dumping. There are other provisions of the municipal code that already address that issue. If there is illegal dumping by people claiming to do self haul of organics, we will use those provisions of the municipal code to enforce that. And then if it turns out that there are some provisions of this ordinance that could be revised to. Improve the city's ability to enforce. Or if and when cow recycle updates its regulations on the issue, we could come back with an amendment. But I I do feel that for the time being, moving forward with the version that that's in your packet is the better approach.
Mr. Vice Mayor, could I follow up with a question?
Yes, please.
So if you could explain in the first paragraph. It seems that the original version says that if I have organist waste. You know, I could bring it to, let's say hypothetically, my neighbor. And then we can combine our our organic waste and get it picked up as one. Where the the red line version seems to eliminate that and says that if I'm going to be a self hauler, I have to actually haul it to a. A solid waste facility. Am I reading that correctly? And if we use the original version. Would a person be able to bring it to another individual if if, you know, they they don't have enough organic to. Have pickups at their place, they could just bring it up to to a neighbors and and kind of have a community area? Is that accurate?
Okay, so to sort of take those in reverse, as the city manager implied or or said in his questions on the first issue. The the services to be provided by Marin Sanitary are bundled. So so anybody who subscribes to Marin Sanitary Service is going to get an organics can. If they get the organics can, then they're already paying for the pickup. So the so the idea that somebody who has a minimal amount of waste would not. Put it in their own can and and put it out for pickup. Could happen. There may be reasons that somebody would want to do that, but. But it's, it seems like an unlikely scenario to me. But then to expand on your quest, on your more direct question. The, so this is the way I see the ordinance working as proposed. That that first paragraph is in the definition sections of the section of the ordinance and just defines what self haul means. And so it covers everybody. Who takes solid, takes organic waste to someplace else or to somebody else. So everybody who's is covered. Then section six point zero point, six point zero eight point one seven zero of of the ordinance. Regulates how somebody who is is self hauling has to do it. And that section as a whole actually already contains a requirement. That those who are self hauling take it to an authorized facility. And so I actually think in some ways. That including in the definition of self haul, that that it means somebody who takes organics to a particular facility. Actually narrows the definition and potentially gives people who would otherwise be subject to the requirements of the ordinance. A possible defense of saying, I'm not actually self hauling because I'm not taking my waste to to one of these facilities. Whereas the broader definition means anybody who takes their organic waste, somebody else. Is considered a self hauler and has to comply with the regulatory requirements of the rest of the ordinance. So in other words, I think that the the amendment that they're proposing actually defeats the purpose that they're trying to achieve.
All right. So if if their amendment narrows the definition, why are you against it?
Because I actually think that we need the broader definition to cover everybody who takes organic waste someplace else. And then makes them all comply with the regulatory requirements of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harof, any questions and thoughts?
No, but I'd be happy to make a motion if that's appropriate.
Okay, let me check one more time with our state clerk if if Mayor Helmer is, I do see his. There and I'm wondering if he's available either to vote or to run the meeting.
Mayor Helmer, I'm going to ask you to unmute on your phone line if you're able to chime in at the moment. And to do that yourself, you can also use star six.
Okay, it looks like maybe he's. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor and and at this point, I I understand the recommendation. Was to conduct the hearing, to move and introduce and wave the first reading and adopt the resolution approving the amendment. To the collection agreement with Marin Sanitary Services. So. That's that's the motion that's on the floor. Is that, is that correct?
Sort of. If I could amend that slightly. So Allison, this is Kevin. I would like to introduce, move to introduce without amendment. And wave the first reading of ordinance ten fifty-six, amending chapter six point oh eight of Larkspur Municipal Code. To update the city's solid waste regulations in accordance with SB thirteen eighty-three. I don't think I needed more elaborate motion than that.
Yeah. And is that satisfactorily phrased, City Attorney?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I I assume that Councilmember Harof is is just, is only moving the ordinance for the moment and then there'll be a second motion on the on the resolution.
Yes, I didn't get into that, but I didn't think that was necessary for tonight's purposes.
Okay, so do we have a second on that?
Sure, I'll second it.
Okay, great. So we have a motion. It's been seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Candell.
Yes.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paulson.
Yes.
And I'll try one more time for Mayor Helmer.
Yes.
There is.
Thank you. And the most motion passes and with the Vice Mayor and audio connection. Mayor, would you like to continue the meeting?
I'm not sure that I'm, hi, I'm, I don't, not sure what to, how to do that.
I think it might be helpful, Vice Mayor, if you continue to steer the meeting. The mayor and I were just conversing to get him back online and I think. As long as we keep him capable of voting and making comments, we're in pretty good shape.
Okay, great. So it's, it sounds like we have passed that motion and. Can we move on then from item seven point one or is there any other unfinished business?
There is, there is the amendment to the the proposed amendment to the franchise agreement and there's a resolution. To that could be moved for approval to make those amendments.
I see.
These are just to amend the franchise agreement to make changes to provide services that are consistent with SB thirteen eighty-three.
Okay, so do we have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, great. And a second?
I'll be happy to second it.
Okay, so Allison, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Candell.
Yes.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paulson.
Yes.
Mayor Helmer.
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion passes, both motions pass. And with that, I believe we're ready to move to item seven point two. So looking at our agenda, we are now. Considering the possible adoption of an interim urgency ordinance for Larkspur. To add section title eighteen of the Larkspur Municipal Code to adopt regulations of new housing development. To comply with Senate Bill SB nine. Could we get a report on this item, please?
Before Neil starts, I just want to note you're getting quite a tag team tonight and getting your soon to retire planning and building director Neil Poff. And then our contract planning manager, Dan Horton, you know, they worked on this together and appreciate they did the omen's work in very short amount of time. To give this urgency ordinance to you. With that, Neil, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you, city manager Dan Schwartz and mayor. Let's see, we've got Vice Mayor Gabe Paulson, we got Mayor Helmer on the line. Mayor and council members, thank you very much. And as Dan mentioned. This is an urgency ordinance being brought to you. Because of recent changes to state law, particularly the. California Planning and Zoning Law as it affects our single family residential zoning districts. This is a project that. Our planning manager, Daniel Horter, came on earlier this month. We put our heads together and began working on this. And I would say he's done most of the heavy lifting. Having worked in other jurisdictions and having some connections. To those agencies, Daniel came in with some perspective on the topic. But also, as we were working on this, we realized. Many agencies are struggling to really figure out how to implement this law, what it means. How to integrate it into their ordinance. It's rather convoluted when you try to. Apply it to your local regulations. And it was a learning process. And what we did is looked at a lot of similar agencies. And tried to review what are the best practices. They're doing in order to. Integrate this and apply it. And we did see how some agencies were using. Utilizing SB nine to encourage housing development. To help meet their current and future arena needs. Others were utilizing local ordinance to. You know, minimize incentivizing SB nine. Development particularly in areas of other communities that have areas of steep hillsides, constrained access. And high fire hazard risk. So we have developed this urgency ordinance really based upon the latter approach to take. Fairly constrained approach to try to minimize incentives, particularly in our areas that are. Are wooly zones or steep hillsides or wooded areas. That have constrained emergency access and evacuation routes and that's, that's. A concern. It's a concern of our our fire chief. And so that's the approach we've taken to do that, yet make sure we're meeting the mandate. And as we'll talk about later in the discussion. It's certainly, this is an interim ordinance. It's meant to really be a placeholder until the community is able to engage in a, in a. A bit broader discussion about housing and the goals and. How development of this type in the single. How development of this type in the single-family residential areas may be. Uh, may be prudent or where it may be um discouraged. Uh, so with that, the other thing I do want to, um, one more thing, I do want to uh point out before. Uh, introducing Daniel, uh, to give the presentation is. We did, uh, really right before the meeting and with some um. Technical difficulties with power outages, did send to the council a a rata sheet for the. Uh, for the exhibit A, which is really the language of the ordinance. And while this kind of comes out of context, I want to make sure everybody in the audience is aware, we do have a. A bit of a rata, some edits, we're suggesting, these are available on the agenda, uh, that's online. Uh, which also has a brief description of the of the significant changes, some are just corrections to some typos. Uh, a little bit of language and reference corrections, um, but to go quickly through a few items to be clear. Um, initially, we did want to uh make it a, make an edit. On a few sections to make sure this is addressing the R one first residential zoning district. Initially, it was generically kind of referencing single-family residential district. Um, but for the purpose of applying this to specific areas and um avoiding any. Interpretive questions or issues, um, we're applying it strictly to the R one residential zoning district. Um, we're also clarifying the exemption from the urban lot splits applies to sites with historic structures. The language in the mandate talks about exempting historic sites. But we want to be clear, there is not a differential or or argument over whether it's a. Uh, historic site or a historic structure. Um, we've also clarified lot in eighteen one hundred oh four oh H. Uh, lot line splits are not permitted to create non-conformant setbacks for accessory structures. The state mandates that existing uh. Uh, residential structures can be, uh, the lots, the lots can be designed at a zero lot line. Um, but it is not clear about accessory structures and we're seeking to um require accessory structures meet those um requirements. We're also requiring that the urban lot split, as we've identified. It must be uh submitted concurrently with ministerial building permits for SB nine units. So because the main um discretion or. The main uh driver involved in determining whether or not a lot split is meets health and safety codes depends upon. Uh, the development proposed needing all health, safety and fire codes, so having a. Um, a valid SB nine development helps to make that determination. And uh, we've clarified that it must be a complete building permit application that does comply with all. Building and health and safety, life safety standards. Um, we've also clarified in section, uh, eighteen one hundred oh six oh A. Uh, we've clarified the reference to floor area standards where we're discussing. Uh, the maximum floor area for SB nine units and ADUs. That um the floor area standards of the municipal code apply except. That it can be up to eight hundred square feet for um these units. Um, and we've identified consistency, a sixteen foot height limit throughout uh for as a minimum. And um, on eighteen one hundred oh seven oh D. We corrected a a front yard setback to twenty feet, so it matches the current, um. The current setback requirement, the state mandate prescribed minimum four foot setbacks for front. And excuse me, sides and rear, um, but we're prescribing continuing to prescribe a twenty foot front setback. Uh, consistent with our current zoning standards as opposed to forty as it was written in the ordinance. Um, so those are kind of the more, um. Changes that have a bit more significance, mostly other changes are really. Uh, typographical corrections or corrections to certain numbers. Uh, so I wanted to give that framework uh for anybody who's been. Who's studied the ordinance uh as and any members of the public interested in this topic. So with that, um, I'll go ahead and hand it over to Daniel, he's gonna provide a PowerPoint presentation. Walk walk through the ordinance uh for you, you have any questions with me before we move on? Okay, well, let Daniel take it away.
Thank you, thank you, it's a heavy load here, uh, I can share my screen. Okay. Those got a little bit of overlap there. Uh, good evening, Mayor Helmer, uh, Vice Mayor Paulson, members of City Council. Again, Dan Hoarder, interim planning manager, uh, the presentation before you tonight covers Senate Bill nine. Uh, it's called the referred to is the California Housing Opportunity and More Efficiency Act or Home. Uh, the act was signed by Governor Newsom on September sixteen, twenty twenty-one and officially becomes effective January first, twenty twenty-two, so in a couple weeks. Um, it amends California, um. Uh, government code sections to add new zoning laws and modify restrictions for single-family residential projects. Um, it is an urgency ordinance before you tonight and it amends title eighteen of Larkspur Municipal Code. The act requires ministerial review of SB nine development project and urban lot splits without any hearing or public input. The city cannot impose subjective standards or prohibit any of the SB nine units from being in at least eight hundred square feet. In floor area. Um, applicant cannot demolish more than twenty-five percent of the exterior walls unless the. Ordinance, uh, unless local ordinance or city ordinance allows it. Or if the site is is not been occupied by a tenant in the past three years and that'll come up a few times in the presentation. Uh, the ordinance proposes that SB nine dwelling units, whether rented or sold, be affordable to very low, low income. And moderate income households. Uh, the city can require up to one parking space per unit unless the parcel is located within. Uh, a half mile of a high-quality transit corridor or major transit stop. A si- a significant amount of the single-family districts are located within a half mile of a transit corridor along Magnolia. Avenue and Saint Francis Drake Boulevard. And unless otherwise required, parking may not intensify non-conforming site coverage or natural state or grading limits of. Driveway standards uh for the projects shall comply with Central Marin Fire Department Standard two ten, which requires. A minimum width of sixteen feet. A minimum vertical clearance of fourteen feet and a maximum grade not to exceed eighteen percent unless approved. Up to twenty-two percent by the fire code official. Grading for each eight hundred square foot unit is allowed up to twenty-five cubic yards for each structure. New SB nine structures are limited to eight hundred square foot maximum floor area and fifteen feet in height unless. Otherwise set back thirty feet or more. SB nine allows a minimum of four foot setbacks on the rear and the side of the new SB nine units. Outdoor hardscape materials shall meet all front and side setbacks uh in Larkspur Municipal Code. And eve overhangs and cylinder projection shall also meet the required setbacks.
Uh, Daniel, sorry to interrupt, uh, are you, do you need to advance the slides? I think you're still on parking.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, I get caught up. I get excited sometimes. Coverage to natural state shall comply with section eighteen thirty-four eighty of the Larkspur Municipal Code. And in no manner exceed twenty-five percent plus the average so calculated um in eighteen thirty-four thirty. Um, new SB nine units uh shall relate to the existing primary dwelling unit in materials. Um, and walls and roofing materials should have a light reflectivity values of fifty and forty respectively. Lighting shall be cut and um, what I'm talking about now is the development standards, the objective development standards that are required by the state. Uh, lighting shall be cut off type fixtures located at each exterior doorway. Where the minimum necessary to comply with California building codes. On the SB nine dwelling units are required to install and maintain fire sprinklers. New electrical and utility services shall be undergrounded for each new unit. Fire apparatus access shall be a minimum of twenty-foot access road or otherwise approved by the fire code official. And the access road shall support a fire apparatus weighing a minimum of seventy-five thousand pounds. And any heritage trees defined in twelve sixteen of the Larkspur Municipal Code that are removed as a result. Of an SB nine dwelling unit shall be replaced with a forty-nine inch box tree of similar species. The city shall require in this case a minimum of ten foot between detached structures. Access accessory, accessory buildings are permitted and shall be subject to the standard limitations prescribed in the miss. Municipal code for height, floor area, site coverage and natural state. And finally, objective architectural design standard shall be applied by the community development director or designate during the required ministerial review. Now, these are some of the mandates for lots, for urban lots, but it's for uh Senate Bill nine. Uh, Senate Bill nine requires ministerial approval of the urban lot split and requires that each lot be approximately equal in area. Except that one lot may be no less than forty percent of the original size, and I'll get to some examples of that later on. Uh, the minimum lot size under allowed under SB nine is twelve hundred square feet, meaning the original lot size must be a minimum of. Twenty-four hundred square feet net, which is relatively small, so that's kind of discouraging. Uh, the city may require easements for public services and facilities and require access to public right of way. And those easements would be taken out of the lot size. To ensure adequate and in-depth uh review of projects, concurrent applications. Are required and necessary to ensure the criteria are met, the various review requirements together such as access, utility, citing and et cetera. There is a caveat, the the building official may make written findings based on a preponderance and evidence. That the project would have adverse impact on pub- impact on public health and safety and may deny the project. More mandates required, uh, that setbacks are required from the existing primary structure in a newly created lot. Um, is not affected by those setbacks and can be minimal. SB nine does not prevent the city from collecting development or impact fees. For SB nine projects and all uses on urban lot splits are limited to residential uses. Existing parcels shall be split along the longest property line dimension. The front property line shall be parallel to the public and private street as much as possible. Prior to recording the parcel map, a separate utility meter shall be provided. And new parcels shall be connected to public sewer or onsite system fully contained within a newly created parcel. In this case, lot line should be straight when possible unless to to avoid existing improvements or natural surroundings. It should be per- perpendicular to street as much as possible. Approbably distance from existing buildings, the tops of slopes and the creek banks. And be continued. Sorry, and be contiguous with existing zoning boundaries. To ensure compliance with health, safety regulations, no variance or modifications to fire codes or construction standard shall be permitted. Now I'm gonna talk about some of the restrictions, there's only a few, um. Generally, they apply to the applications for SB nine dwelling units or urban lot splits. The applicant shall sign an affidavit that they intend to reside in one of the units for a minimum of three years. Um, so it's got to be de-restricted to that. And all units created under SB nine shall not be rented for less than thirty days, so it eliminates the short-term occupancy requirement or uh standards. Uh, uh, like Airbnb or so forth. Some other restrictions include a one-hour related raided firewall. Uh, constructed between all attached structures and a deed restriction shall be recorded stating that no further subdivision of the property is permitted. After the SB nine urban lot split. So now I'll talk about a couple of the exemptions.
I think you gotta move on the slide, slide, Daniel.
Yeah, sorry. Housing is is, housing that is subject to the to a law that restricts rents to very low. Low and moderate income households, um, cannot be demolished or um altered. As part of an SB nine project. In addition, housing that is subject to price control through city requirements cannot. And housing that has been occupied by a tenant in the last three years, yeah. Parcel was not subject to prior urban lot split, um, so that's one of the exemptions that it can be split if it has not been prior. SB SB nine projects cannot be cited in any area stated in in section six five nine three point four. A six B two K of the California Government Court Code, that's a mouthful. And the the sections that it refers to um are far and wide. The city is not able to entirely prohibit urban lot splits or two-unit residential developments within the city's high fire zones. Because the city has also adopted fire hazard mitigation me- measures within titles fourteen and fifteen of the municipal code.
I think this is your next slide too.
Sorry. Um, so many of those uh exemptions refer to prime farmland, wetlands, very high fire hazard, um, severity zones. Uh, hazardous waste, earthquake fault zones and so forth, um. Uh, and again, the city cannot entirely prohibit the the lot splits. Um, in the two-unit developments within the city's fire, high fire zone. Um, but we can, we require that both proposed and existing development comply with high fire hazard building code standards. In those areas such as fire resistant building materials, um, uh, fire sprinklers and defensible space requirements. And finally, for exemptions, the exemption covers SB nine development does not apply to historic districts or properties in local inventories. That are historic. Senate Bill nine requires that all standards uh for review, whether it's zoning standard, subdivision standard or. Uh, design review standards are objective, meaning, um. That the the standards are based on factual measurements in the absence of biased judgment or subjective analysis, so. Um, many, many design review uh standards are subjective and we've attempted to, uh. To require all the objective objectives for um zoning subdivision and design review within um exhibit A. Of the ordinance to be uh objective standards. Following there's some uh SB nine development and urban loss scenarios. Uh, this is what it would look like approximately if a lot split were forty percent minimum of the original lot size with no setback required. To the original home, um, that line could be closer to the home if if they so desired. Uh, this would be a. This would be a SB nine would allow a lot split uh with the forty percent in the rear, a new home, four foot side and rear setbacks. This is a lot split, similar conditions with adding a second home or ADU in the back. Um, four foot setbacks on both, um, this could be, and I'll show you an example in a couple slides, this could be a two, two hundred, two eight hundred unit. Uh, eight hundred square foot units um connected as a duplex as well. Here again shows the lot split, the new home with the four foot. Uh, four foot side and rear yard setbacks, a new ADU. And a new ADU or junior ADU uh to the original home or again in the rear two eight hundred square foot units or duplex could be developed. Here I show an example of what the two hundred to eight hundred square foot units might look like. The, the example on the page shows the existing ADU requirements where you could, you could construct three. Three structures basically or three units on one, one parcel, the junior ADU, the primary. Dwelling unit and the ADU in the back. The SB nine example shows the, the two eight hundred square foot units. Joined as a duplex, the ADU in the front and the primary dwelling unit. No, no SB nine lots flick can occur without access, you must have access to the, to the rear or to the properties in general to the public street. Driveway access must meet the required, the required standards of two ten of the central Marin fire department. Which again, I went through before requires a sixteen foot. With fourteen foot height and eighteen percent slope minimum or maximum. So here's some future options for consideration, some of the, some of the items that we included in the, in the ordinance where the affordability requirement for sale or rental. And also alternatives to, to allow larger units, we have a maximum eight hundred square foot, it's also the minimum. Per state requirement, we've included a maximum eight hundred square foot. But an example of an alternative might be a sliding scale for floor based on the size of the lot. The larger, the lots can accommodate larger units but cap the ultimate size possibly based on. You, which is twelve, twelve hundred square foot based on the number of bedrooms included. With that, I will turn it over and for questions and comments, I know I've packed a lot in there. Sorry, I'm in the shadows too, I don't have much light at my desk.
Thank you, Daniel, that was a lot of information and welcome on board, it's great to see you here. Questions from the council for Daniel? Or for our planning director?
Can I, can I make one more, Mary, one more quick point too, is that was in the staff report? The, the ordinance also includes a provision that allows for affordable housing. As a requirement, it, it doesn't actually call out that requirement, but it allows for the provision through resolution in the council. And some communities have done that and that does present a, on one hand. A way of creating more affordable housing as some of these developments may not be necessarily affordable, so through. Deaf restricted requirements for affordable housing could help meet that goal. On the flip side, it would further disincentivize a property owner from. Engaging in that kind of development, so there's a pro and con to that from a housing perspective. And, and it may be seen as again, kind of another disincentive. But it certainly isn't intent to meet the housing goal and, and we've seen some communities do that. We did not include that as a strict requirement or try to outline that. Program because the other issue is Larkspur does not itself have. A housing program or a way of really managing either for sale or rental housing. Easily on a lot by lot, property by property basis, we do. Projects and we work with red housing authority. So that would be again, kind of a, a matter of discussing. Whether or not that's an appropriate approach and what the goals are in accomplishing that, and I think. We still have a lot to see where, how that works in communities that are either doing that or. Whether communities are seeing housing realized regardless. And then the other, the other thing to keep in mind too is. Other communities are using some approaches if you have larger. Properties, so if you're not necessarily needing the minimum lot sizes, but you have larger properties. Of allowing more floor area, so there can be a progressive approach to encouraging. Some of these lot splits or some of this development. On larger lots that the community may feel that that's worthwhile, again, we haven't. Gone through the exercise of really trying to parse out certain neighborhoods and certain lot sizes in this particular exercise. So issues like. Higher setbacks and things might, might be considered as ways to. Incentivize some of this development in lots that may be more accommodating to that. But again, we haven't done that exercise, so those are a couple of things to consider as we board on this.
Great, thank you, Director Tough, I believe the mayor Hilmer had some comments or questions?
Just a question, thank you very much for the presentation and the information. My question really has to do with. What as a minimum is necessary tonight? So that we can move this forward and come back with a. More. I guess a more rich discussion of all the things were to be considering. And a more comprehensive. And time allowed period so that we can absorb everything that's being considered here. That's a question.
Yeah, Director Tough, I don't know if you want to address that.
Yeah, well, I, I think, again, this is an, this is an urgency ordinance we provided to address. That. A process, a way of approaching these at least when it is enacted on January first, when it comes into effect, we. We already have had some queries. Regarding this, so I would not say. Where, you know, I would not say they're beating down the door, but a lot of agencies are scrambling to. Get something in place, whether it's guidelines, a permanent ordinance or an urgency ordinance. And so we felt at least an urgency ordinance was an approach.
Would it be fair in answering the mayor's question to say? This preserves the most local control at the moment, given SB nine. So the council could then. Study SB nine further in twenty twenty two and they could choose to yield some of that local control that they're preserving. Through this action tonight.
Yes, that's, I mean, that's a good way of framing it is that we tried to design this to. Preserve as much local control and not incentivize the SB nine approach. Particularly in the more challenged neighborhoods.
And I just add to just expand on the, this is Sky, to just expand on the, the. State law that we're operating under and bringing this forward. So what, and I say this in part for the benefit of the public and for our two newer council members is. State law has a more substantial process for typically adopting new planning and zoning laws. But it also has a provision for the adoption of interim, of an interim ordinance on an urgency basis. To provide a city with time to study a new situation and determine whether or not. Or how to regulate it on a permanent basis. So what's before the council tonight is an urgency ordinance that, as the city manager and planning director have noted. Basically. Maximizes the amount of local control that the city could exercise under the state law. And then sets up a process where over the course of ultimately the next two years. The city can study this new law further, take additional rules through the planning commission to get their input and then bring to the city council. Further changes to provide a more nuanced approach or to, to, to. Reduce the, the amount of local control that's being exercised.
Thank you very much, I, just a quick follow up. Am I to understand that? With respect to the, the, the rules as they're proposed. That a, a minimum street frontage for these lot splits. Would be fifty feet and that no flag lots are permitted. Under the current proposal.
Yes.
Cause I, I, I believe that. Clarifies. Quite a bit with respect to. Any immediate. Lot split considerations regarding many of the neighborhoods in the city. With that, I'll, I'll ask for any other questions or comments from the council members. And turn it back to the vice mayor, given my internet limitations, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, it looks like both customer, Rickandale and customer, Haroff had their hands up, so in either order, I think maybe customer or hair if you were first.
No, I, I, let's get, let's let Scott go first, first, that's fine.
Not important, Neil, I just had a quick question about what you had said towards the end there. Are all of the units for this split lot low or moderate income? You know, is that a requirement for any lots, but or can you just explain that real quick?
No, as we've written this, it's not a requirement, what, what we have written in, it's at the very end of exhibit A. Is a requirement that should the city council adopt a resolution. Outlining a requirement for affordability and a process for managing and enforcing that. Then that. The properties would then be subject to that requirement. So we've provided a provision to allow for that, but we haven't outlined that as a requirement.
Let, let me just follow up real quick with Sky, so if we pass this, which doesn't have a requirement for. You know, some type of low income housing for the law split. And people apply for this tomorrow. And then two months from now, we decide we want it to be just for low or, or moderate income housing. The people who had already applied would be grandfathered in and be able to, to, to do this without that requirement, is that accurate?
If the city council were able to adopt a resolution implementing an affordability program. Prior to the issuance of building permit. It may be possible to require those units to comply with the program because they wouldn't have yet. Obtained any vested development rights. But ultimately, if, if, if a project came in and approved and were approved. The, and, but prior to the implementation of a program, then they wouldn't be subject to the affordability requirements.
It does, and so my comment is that I don't think there is time at this point to have philosophical conversation. Of how we want this to look in our city. And I do believe we do have to pass an urgency ordinance just because to be. Because the state law is coming into effect, we should have something. But I believe at some point we should decide that are we trying to. Increase the, the housing in our city and we want that increase to be low income housing, moderate market rate housing. And we should have that conversation sooner than later. Because otherwise people are going to start applying and we're going to lose the, the ability to make that decision, so. I, 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 I agree that we need to have an urgency ordinance, but I'm going to ask that we. I guess counter that or somehow have that discussion so we can decide what we want to do and shape this a little bit better, that's all.
Thank you, Scott, um, Council member here.
Yeah, just very quickly. First, I want to say I appreciate the clarifications that our city manager and city attorney provided a little bit earlier in this conversation. This is clearly something that we need to do and I will be prepared to move. Adoption of the ordinance when we get to that in a few minutes. At this point, I just wanted to have a quick question for, for Neil, who mentioned how deed restrictions may or may not be. Utilized in the context of this ordinance or other things we might be doing. And the question is whether or not SB nine. Constrains the ability of. Individual property owners to dis deed restrict their property. In ways that. They wish under the current rules. But may be, may be affected in the future by state legislation.
I, I think I need a little clarity on, on your question is. Does SB nine constrain a property owner from deed restricting their prop, their own property? In ways outside of, of, of our regulations? And I guess I'd ask what, what, what would necessarily be their. Purpose or what is it? Were.
It, it may be, it may be to preserve the integrity of the property that they own currently and. And I don't, I'm not advocating. Doing that or not, but I just want to make sure that I understand that. You know, deed restrictions are something that's, that have been around forever in terms of. The capacity of homeowners, property owners in general to, to define the future of their properties. I don't think this law precludes them from doing that, but I, that's the reason I asked the question.
Yeah, I think if your question is, would they, would the law preclude them from deed restricting their property in a way that. Like limits future use to a single family residence or something not necessarily provided under SB nine.
Correct.
I don't know, did it envision that and, and I guess I might. Have to ask the city attorney. To weigh in on, on that. Question.
Yeah, I, I don't believe that it would, I don't want to say conclusively, but. The way SB nine is largely structured is it tells cities. You must ministerially approve. Lot splits that meet these requirements and the addition of. A single family or townhome structures on existing lots or. Or split lots, so basically it's a mandate to cities about how they would review.
Correct.
An application that meets the, the state law requirements. If there's an underlying limitation that is outside of the city's control on the development of the property. I don't believe that SB nine has anything to say about that, it, it limits. Deed, in a few instances deed restrictions that a city could impose. But if there is an underlying restriction on the use of or development of property that's outside of the city's control, I don't think SB nine overrides that or, or. Or really has much to say about it.
Okay, that, that's the clarification that, that I wanted and it was actually partly for public. Understanding that, that this, this law and the requirements that we would be adopting. Tonight through this ordinance or might adopt in the future. In order to comply with state legislation. Does not supplant the ability of private property owners to. Take actions including but not limited to deed restricting their property. And that, that's, that's my understanding, but I mean, I, I think the, the legislation. Doesn't make that clear to, you know, everybody who might be affected by it. So thank you for that clarification, that's the only question that I wanted to ask. And as I mentioned, when we get to it after a public comment, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember, any other comments or questions from the council on this matter? I, I just had a few to ask before we move to the public. The first is really around public safety, so in our staff report on the very last page, on page thirty one. There is a, a, a map which shows the high fire zones and my, my first question was. If the, if that map is actually the high, the very high hazard severity zones defined by the Department of Forestry. Or what the sources of those red shaded areas which take up about half of the city?
Yeah, those, actually those areas are not. Do not reflect what was mapped by the Department of Forestry, those are, those reflect what is. do not reflect what was mapped by the Department of Forestry. Those are those reflect what is mapped according to our local ordinance. And if you'd like to see the Department of Forestry maps generated many years back, have most of those areas you see are within high fire hazard zones, but not within the very high fire hazard zones. Those are areas limited further back up the canyon along the bridge lines, barely touching into the drone. And I could show you that, but there is a differential between the CAL FIRE maps as quoted in that section versus our local ordinance adopted through our master fire code. And in fact, the Green Bay hills, the entire Green Bay hills are wooey and locally designated as very high fire hazard zones, but not even indicated on state fire maps as any form of high fire hazard zone. So there is a differential there, but because these were adopted locally, they are recognized as fire hazard zones, and we believe they are applicable to this exemption. All that said, the exemption actually is not a fully not a full exemption because it allows projects that implement codes and standards to mitigate for, you know, potential fire hazard. Those are codes that we've adopted. But they are there are codes that can be challenging and particularly the fire safety manuals that are put out by the by the fire department.
Okay, I thank you for that clarification. So I I just, as I understand your answer, the the this map is is going to be substantially a smaller area. And what SB nine does provide is in that smaller area, no lot splits can occur. And what we're doing for an interim urgency ordinance is to say we're not going to allow or we're actually going to ask for a higher level of fire, you know, resistance and and, you know, fire building codes in the areas which encompass almost half of the city. You know, pretty much anywhere you have a tree around, you know, we've we've shaded it red. So so the second question I I wanted to ask is, you know, I have the bill here. I've been, you know, reading it over during the day. Is can we, you know, just very briefly summarize what local control we're maintaining that's not in the bill? Because it seems like we're incorporating most, you know, most of the sections. I'm not sure what, you know, what local, you know, maybe a few points of what we're giving up. If we, you know, move to the full adoption of SB nine.
Daniel, you want to try to field some of that?
Yeah, I'm trying to get back to some of the so we've taken a lot of the objective standards that we do have in our zoning ordinance and applied them to SB nine standards, whether for the lot split development standards or the the SB nine dwelling unit standards. So some of those would include these are mandates. So here's a dwelling unit standards. Ten foot separation. Accessory dwelling units shall comply with the other requirements of the code.
I think we've we've actually identified eight hundred square feet as being the maximum. It's the minimum under the mandate. But it's the maximum square footage under our code because the mandate only requires the local agency to not preclude up to eight hundred square feet. So that's that's our mandated maximum. That's kind of one of the major what you might call local development standard controls.
Our 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 fire access standards are very important. Heritage tree I have up on screen here. Exterior lighting, stuff like that is is is, you know, straight out of our ordinance. And we're applying it because it's, you know, we can we can do it objectively to get a more something that's more inclined to to be similar to our existing code.
Okay, thank you. And my last question before going to the public is, you know, this is probably obviously I asked the city manager earlier and Scott to confirm. So none of this legislation, this ordinance would not affect the mobile home park, Marin Park. It's it's a different land use jurisdiction, correct?
Are those are they rented or owned?
They're a mobile home park where they own the improvement, but not the land.
Yeah, then most likely I don't see that happening. There's no no, no language in the in the SB nine that would include mobile home parks.
Yes, and it's it's tailored to single family residential zoning districts, and we've clarified that as being the R one first residential zoning district, not the mobile home park district.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so if there aren't any other questions from the council, turn it over to the public and else, and if you can.
But yeah, and one, one, one thing I think before you go, and I'm sorry to present any sort of uncertainty on our part, but I was checking with our fire chief and Daniel, if you can go down to the last the last scenario. I can add some language that is not entirely correct. So I want to make sure, yeah, the driveway. I think it's actually possible. And Daniel, correct me, did we require a driveway with a lot split? Because I think a lot split could be possible if there is no parking required. And they simply provide the pedestrian access and adequate emergency access less than a hundred fifty feet from the roadway.
We have provisions for pedestrian access in the code or in the in the proposed amendment. And we do talk about driveways. They, you know, as long as it has access to a public street, if they don't need parking, then I think we would have supplied them with pedestrian access.
Yeah, so I think I think you could have a scenario where we could have a lot split that does not have necessarily have a driveway. And in fact, the way this is written, it's not necessarily encouraging the provision of parking for a site. In fact, it may in fact restrict it unless unless the council seeks to allow for more flexibility relative to other development standards. We've, I think, to kind of get back to Vice Mayor Paulson's point, we have applied the site coverage and the and the natural state requirements. These these are physical development requirements that become pretty restrictive as you get into steeper sloped areas. And because the mandate really just requires you not to preclude the development of the SB nine unit, it doesn't speak to necessarily having to provide accessory facilities and accessory driveways or parking that is not required. So the way this is actually formulated, if parking is not required and you are exceeding your natural state or your coverage, things that you might need for that driveway parking, you may not meet the requirements of the SB nine development. And I think that kind of works both ways. Often, the city likes to see the parking provided, but the property owner may not be incentivized to develop units that require a long stair stairway climb. The fire department requires any house be within accessible and within the back the very rear of the home is within a hundred and fifty feet of a driveway for fire access roadway. That's just one of the many complex nuances that you kind of run into this type of ordinance.
Thank you. So anything else from the council? Okay, yeah, a lot to digest. So I will turn it over and see if there's any public comments.
My first comment will come from James Holm.
James Holmes, Larchburg. This seems like a very prudent and thorough emergency ordinance, which takes a a good idea of keeping our powder dry in in this interim period. I have one question and comment about the provision relating to sewer connection. That provision is on Exhibit A, the draft ordinance, Exhibit A, page four, section eighteen point one hundred point oh four oh G, subpart G. It says that to units shall be connected to a public sewer or provide a private wastewater system that is fully contained within the property boundaries. I I have two questions about that. First, would this literally allow the added structure to simply connect to the existing structures sewer rather than to have a separate sewer connection to the street? If so, I that I don't think it would be a good idea to let sewers double up like that. And secondly, would this allow with with the reference to wastewater system fully contained? Would that allow the second unit to have a septic tank? I thought that in Larchburg, we don't allow septic tanks where where a sewer, a sanitary sewer is available. So I wonder if those two questions regarding sewer connection could be clarified.
Thank you, James. Neil or Daniel, would you like to answer that?
Yeah, that's that's straight out of SB nine. So if they're not permitted, then in 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 Larchburg, then they they wouldn't be permitted.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the public?
Looking for any additional raised hand or emailed public comments. And there is no further public comment.
Great, thank you, Allison. So we'll bring it back to the council for one last chance for comment, and I believe Councilmember Harof was ready to move this item. But before that, any last thoughts or comments? Yes, Councilmember Candell.
Yeah, thank you. I I just, again, I I don't know if the council has the appetite to tackle this issue right now. But I I I see a need for low income housing in Larchburg. I don't really see a need for market rate housing. I would be willing to discuss the amendment that that Neil was suggesting or had mentioned that would require these be low income housing if a property was going to be subdivided in this way. If the council had the appetite to have that conversation at this point, as this is an interim or urgency ordinance, we could always change it later, but it would at least set the 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 bar moving forward, what we'd have to do. But again, I'll leave it up to the council if we want to address that now or later.
Yeah, thank you, Scott. I I actually have a question around that. And my read of SB nine is that, you know, the full adoption of SB nine allows for any areas to be designated as affordable housing. Is that correct?
Um, I'll I'll chime in and say that I I believe that SB nine leaves room for local jurisdictions to make a determination about whether or not, and I'll just loosely call them SB nine units, have to be affordable. So if if the city council ultimately adopt, so as we've drafted the ordinance, it basically creates a requirement that the that the SB nine units be affordable. But it does, it does set a separate addition that the city has to have, the city council actually has to adopt a program. And the way we the reason we structured it that way is any affordable housing program typically has a number of very nuanced aspects to it. Like what is the affordability level for rental? How's it going to be monitored to ensure that that affordable rents are being charged? And so rather than try to address those issues as part of crafting this ordinance, we did want to signal to to property owners that it's likely that the council will be adopting a program, and we did build that into the ordinance, but we wanted, but we thought it more prudent to defer that to give the council a little bit more time to figure out exactly how to craft those affordability requirements and make it so that the council could do that by resolution rather than having to adopt a separate ordinance.
Thank you. And and maybe just to continue on on Scott's thought is maybe for the city manager, the current housing element committee and our deadline to create a housing element by the end of twenty twenty two. Does that bear on this? Because I believe the Rena numbers and the affordability, you know, requirements, you know, bear upon this and all of what we're trying to do with EMC, I think, might be what what Scott is asking for, but perhaps he can clarify.
Oh, EMC has said that our consultant on the housing element is that SB nine and SB ten, which we're not talking about tonight, but represent opportunities to count units for what ABAG and HCD call the buffer, which is they're encouraging all agencies to actually plan for more units than required because HCD is going to be scrutinizing the allocation, the planning more than they've done in the past and possibly rejecting units that are submitted. So what they're saying is you can probably put a little bit of allocation out there saying, we think generally our city is going to come up with X amount of SB nine units, for example. But it's very difficult for the staff to say here are a hundred hundred lots in Larchburg that potentially could have an SB nine development and then designate specifically an amount. So I think to get to your question, I wouldn't bank on this being a significant part of the housing element calculation. Bear Neil, because Neil's been part of those conversations. I saw him come back on.
Yeah, and I mean, I I think to to kind of add on to that is even right now in in the directors meetings and the discussions with the Housing Working Group and with representatives from ABAG and the the collaboration, there's to at this point, HCD has has not committed to the SB nine units exactly how they might be counted or what that methodology should be. So there's still discussion about that. And and they may even track just how does each community receive SB nine units? So whether whether or not you know, whether or not you're really encouraging them or not may become also an an item for their oversight and maybe a discussion within the housing element. But it's, you know, a lot of this is still to be seen. And again, I do, I would caution with that in that just requiring affordability does not necessarily generate the affordable units, does not necessarily generate the housing and the affordable units. In fact, to some degree, it can discourage them which is maybe a tactic, but the the, you know, right now, we're having discussions about our inclusionary housing requirement, and some center fell had recently reduced its inclusionary housing requirement percentage in order to encourage more housing development and investment. So there's there's a tension there. Again, there was sort of a issue there with how how do you achieve your affordable units? So it's
I think if I could jump in so we don't get lost on the on the issue before us, that the what I hear Councilmember Candell suggesting you talk about is this is going to happen. The losses of these units need to be affordable. Councilmember Candell suggesting he might want a standard more strict than affordability, which is low income. And now you hear Neil top reminding you that Sandra Fell's actually grown concerned that some affordability requirements actually prove to be a disincentive to development. You may not want to necessarily impose low income until you had a chance to. Impose low income until you had a chance to see SB nine in action.
Thank you. Um, Scott, does that answer your questions?
Uh, yeah, I I mean, it's it's, uh, again, I I I don't know if we need to tackle this today. What I what I heard from Sky is that it's 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 more complicated. And probably unrealistic that we're gonna resolve this today. So I don't mind punting this. But I just think that it's something we uh I should consider and and maybe bring back. An option of of how we define uh low income or affordability for these houses so that we find the right balance. Um, but as yeah, as as Scott said, I don't I don't think it's gonna happen tonight. So I I think, you know, if we could just keep it on the radar moving forward, I'd appreciate that.
And to that end, I think staff can return early in the new year to start a conversation. I think it would start with. What exactly are the definitions of affordable versus low income? So we are on the same page about. What we wanna potentially require of folks looking at the type of developments.
Right, thank you. It looks like the mayor's back. Um, Mayor Hillmer, do you wanna finish up the meeting here?
Uh, I have an unreviable connection, Mr. Vice Mayor. Why don't you continue and I'll admire your performance.
Thank you. I I note that your connection's critical because I don't think we can uh pass this motion without your vote. So before you drop off. Um, I believe uh Councilmember here had a uh desire to move this matter.
Um, uh, yes, so if you're passing it uh back to me, um, I thank you for that uh clarification. Because my understanding is because it is an emergency ordinance, we need uh four out of the five. Members of the council to approve it. And since one of the members of the council is unavailable tonight, that means we need unanimity among those of us who are participating. So with that understanding, I'd like to move. The adoption of ordinance ten fifty five as an emergency interim emerg- emerg- interim urgency ordinance of the city council. Of the city of Larkspur.
That was seconded before.
Just to clarify that 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 the motion includes the amendments that were outlined in the errata sheet that uh.
Yes, thank, yeah, yeah, thank you for that. I should have clarified that. So uh as uh to reflect that comment. The motion is so amended.
And seconded on the the that group, those grounds.
Great, so we have a motion. We have a second. Uh, Allison, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Councilmember Ha.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paulson.
Yes.
Mayor Hillmer.
Yes.
Good.
Great, so the motion passes unanimously with four required votes. And with that, uh, thank you, everybody, for a really. Good discussion considering the urgency. I think there was some good depth here. And again, Daniel, great, welcome on board and Neil, thanks so much. So uh, we only have two items left. Up, uh, okay, yeah, we only have two items left. The uh business items is item number eight, of which there are none. So we can go to our last item, which is to adjourn the meeting. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
You have a motion to adjourn.
Great, all right, well, in a second, so let's uh with this, um, this will be our last meeting of the year. And as the city manager said, we're not meeting the first Wednesday. We'll be meeting the third Wednesday in January and uh. With that, hopefully better internet connections and a lot of holiday cheer. So to everybody, it's just great to see you tonight and. Mayor Hillmer, hope you're doing good out there, and uh, thank you so much and good night.
Mayor Hillmer has never looked so good. So happy.
Vice Mayor, great job running this meeting.
Yes, good, good job under 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 strange circumstances. Thank you very much. Happy holidays to everyone. Happy New Year. And if we don't see each other before uh the new year, go for it. We'll see you then.